All right, Turner County Commission meeting, regular session for Tuesday, June 3rd. And as you're about to see, this is probably gonna be a long one. We're gonna record as long as the batteries last. Here's your agenda. And... There's number 10. There's the one that's gonna be a while. Chairman Budget Presentation with Comments from Department Heads, Elected Officials, and Staff. That's gonna be a long one. But we'll have the details next week for our guys farmer.
Any other things working?
Working, really working.
Sheriff.
Okay.
Citizens complaint, you about to run over me.
What? You about to run over this person.
I saw you right there.
Do you think the game needs?
Doesn't help that we need to.
Game's right here.
Yeah.
They want some of the session.
Thanks, sir.
All right, it is six o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting some order. And I know we have a decent level of agenda items. And I know many of us are here to hear about the budget. So we're gonna try our best to make it through all these items today in as fast way as possible. And make sure everyone has, if they have any questions, that they can get answered. But before we get into it, Mr. Baker, would you like to start off with the meeting?
Lord, to come before you on this day that you gave us some humble thanks with a bowed knee and a bowed heart before the throne of grace and mercy, we just thank you for everything. Lord, thank you for the rain. You sent our farmers, please continue to take care of them and give them what they need. Lord, for the public safety here and represented throughout this county and in fact this nation. We pray a hedge of protection around them that you watch over them as you would watch over us, Lord. As this board meets tonight, we pray that you give them the wisdom they need to make the right decisions in your sight. And Lord, give them the wisdom they need to be good stewards of the tax money that is collected and spent within this community. And then when all is said and done, we will give you the thanks in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right, we'll all set for the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just gonna show you the crowd tonight.
First up, we have the adoption of the agenda. I have one amendment to the agenda, which is Dustin...
The dump trucks.
Dump trucks? Okay, Dustin wants to discuss dump trucks. So I have a motion to approve the agenda within amendment of Dustin, Speaker, about dump trucks.
Uh-oh.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Next up, we are at the approval of the financial information for January and February.
Ooh.
All in favor? Okay. Next up, we have public comments concerning agenda items.
Minutes.
Minutes. Oh, that's good minutes, I'm sorry. Approval of minutes of previous meetings. Make it through.
A motion that we approve the minutes from May 6th to May 27th of 2025.
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, now public comments concerning the items. Okay, hearing none, so we're gonna move right into new business. Our first one is consider approving the county's health insurance for 25. As we know, they presented to us last week. We have a marginal increase. My recommendation is that we stick with what we have in the county, absorb the difference.
Second. If that's a motion.
That is. Give me a motion, sure. I have a motion that we absorb the cost and stick with the program that we already have. And a second discussion? None?
Second.
Second, you second, we got a second emotion. No discussion, all in favor? Okay. Motion carries, we will be staying with Aetna. And the county will absorb the additional costs on behalf of staff. Moving on, consider approving the board performance for Ms. Janet Winter as election supervisor, chief registrar.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
A second? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, none? All right, you're back with us. Next up, we have consider accepting the bid for resurancing the role at the Turner County Public Works. We have a bid of... Oh, it's considered the bid. Did we get more bids, Dustin, or is it just one?
It's just one.
Just the one bid for 33,750. Motion? Second, all in favor? Okay, opposed, none, motion carries. Sorry, didn't have any discussion. Anybody had any discussion on that?
You tried to get, you tried to get some more bids, but you just got the job too small.
Okay, thank you, Dustin. The next one is considering weather siren for City of Sycamore.
So this is, we're asking for a motion to transfer ownership to the City of Sycamore. That's, that's what this is, right?
Yes.
So I move that we transfer ownership and maintenance responsibilities to the City of Sycamore for their weather sirens.
Second.
I'll second it, but can we, under discussion, if the Ashburn and Rebecca, can we just go ahead and say Ashburn and Rebecca if they wanna do the same thing, or?
I can, I can just amend my agenda, my motion.
If they don't, then it's fine, but if we just go ahead, if they wanna do it, they can. They could have it theirs.
Okay, all right, so I amend my motion to transfer all weather sirens to their respective cities, City of Ashburn, Sycamore, or Rebecca, if they so choose, including all responsibilities and maintenance costs for those said items.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries to transfer the responsibility of the weather sirens if they so choose. Next one is consider adopting the phone use agreement for Turner County. This is our agreement where if they would like a stipend for their phone, they can give a stipend, or if they would like to have their own county phone for department head and board.
All right, I motion to approve the phone use agreement on the condition that no stipends be paid unless someone, unless they sign the agreement, so they fully understand what they're...
How much do I go call the taxpayer?
It's $50. The phone is free, it's $50 per month. If someone so chooses to do.
$50 a month? What about any phone?
Only department head, but the board can happen.
I think it's a bad time to do it when we're trying to balance the budget. I mean, everybody's already got a phone.
Well, we're doing it on the advice of our attorney to protect ourselves with regard to FOIA requests and items like that, so that's why I support it, is it set the direction of our...
This is at the advisement of legal. A second? So all in favor of adopting the phone use agreement? Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider adding laws to the referendum. Commissioner Whitten?
Yes, so I asked that this been, would be added, so this, this tax would allow us to, it's a floating option, because we did not, do as the Board of Education did, and we opted to keep our homestead exemption for Turner County. This would allow us to offset some of the issues in regard with Health Bill 581 that limits our ability to raise property taxes. So it's a way to supplement our revenues without adding a tax on the citizens, on a property tax, for a second.
I make a motion to add laws to the referendum. Boogers, go ahead.
Now, second motion.
Second discussion? All right, all in favor of adding laws? Opposed? None? Motion carries. We'll be working with you this winter, attorney, to work with you on getting that.
Be on November's ballot.
November's ballot, yes, thank you. Next up, we have consider approving the executive session minutes for Tuesday, May 6th.
Seven.
Second.
Second, discussion? None? All in favor? All right, motion carries. Next up, some updates from me. Dump trucks, oh, almost missed it, Dustin. Dump trucks.
The last quarter session, we talked about, about it's time to order the new round of trucks before the other ones go to auction. And that's, especially on the boat, before we can go ahead and order two trucks. I just need to get y'all to approve, so I can...
So it's $220,000. How much are we gonna get from the others?
Guaranteed is 390 something, but they're auction. The last truck was sold at the auction, just like the amount was 240 something thousand. First truck.
So it's $440,000 then, 440, and we're gonna get back...
Their guarantee they gave us is 390, 395, I think, that's high guaranteed for an auction. And that's just the cushion that if the auction don't very good. The last auction, they showed the paperwork where the trucks went from 230 to 240, I think.
Could be losing 40,000.
Could be gaining 10,000.
But we get to use the truck for a year.
When we don't know the real number of all the trucks when you go to auction. But they have, they have a floor on it, correct? Yeah. And that's, how much? Yes, for most of them, it'd be 395. For two trucks? Yep. 395. How long are we going with these trucks?
Second. Second, discussion anymore? Okay, all in favor of purchasing the tur, the dump trucks for 220,000?
143,000 dollars?
It's two of them. All in fa, uh, favor?
Try out one thing.
All right, motion carries.
I'll, I'll be cautiously optimistic on this one.
All right. Next up, we'll move into the updates. So the board, we have the option to attend the training in Caloray this, in July. We have upcoming holidays for Juneteenth and July 4th for county government employees. And the budget hearing, the budget public hearing is on June 16th here at 5:30. Okay? And next up, I have a quick presentation on our budget. All of the department heads should have their budgets on the trees. And I'm gonna walk through a presentation on some of the thinking behind our decisions, what we're proposing. This is purely a proposal. Get this mic so everyone can see a little better. All right, I'm not walking you guys? No? Okay, I think it's gonna take a second to warm up, but first, I just wanna say thank you to all of the staff and everyone who's been working in kind of everything. It really takes a, it really takes a village to lead a community and do the work that we do every day, and I wanna thank each and every one of the folks that you do. Moving on, equally as you all have work to do, we as municipal commissioners have a job as well. And you know, our, our responsibility is to ensure every dollar is appropriated in the correct places. Right now, where we stand, we stand at a budget at a front row. We have, we received 12.95 million dollars in general fund requests, and we were able to identify 11.13, 11.13 in general fund. That is clearly a thing that we have to work through, that we have to work through. We have to consider a lot of different options. Those options include expense services, and paying our revenues, raising taxes, using funds more effectively. And what my recommendation is, that we use, do responsible spending and utilize our funds so that people can keep their jobs, so that we don't have to go over taxes, and so that we can keep the county lending as it should. I also want to note that in this budget series, we, everyone was all increases except for the tax assessors. We didn't get any, any options of where can the county save, like what are the opportunities that we can save money or generate more money? I would like us to think more as we go into the new year, how can we give back to the county, how can we save just because we're allocated an amount? How can we not go over an amount so that we can do more projects in our community, more of the projects that we really need to work on? Some of the long-term goals there to building back our reserves. We have over 2 million dollars in building maintenance that needs to be done across the county. We, we have special funds, we need to utilize them more strategically. Also, I encourage all our department heads to think about how we can attract more grant funding for our special projects. We're a small community, we don't have a lot of income, there's a lot of opportunity for us to earn grant revenue. Building back reserves. We're at the lowest balance we've been at in over 13 years. A lot of spending and no more giving back. When we don't have money reserves, it, it puts us in a position where we can't do special projects. Like, for example, we have over 1.28 million dollars in building maintenance, and this is a rough estimate, I'm pretty sure it would be double this. Actually, if we really figured out all the work that needs to be done on the buildings, it would actually probably be more than double what all of these costs are for all of this work that needs to be done. We have these special revenue funds, we have SPOs, T-SPOs, L-MIC, jail fund, hotel, motel tax, in-house fund, victim assistance funds. They all have special uses, and we want to continue to use those as a source to fund and help offset our costs. Aggressively seed grant fund, as I shared, there's lots of grants out there for different programs from, I know me and Bobby, we spoke about some of these in EMS, there's store preservation, there's some parks and brands, there's a variety of different grants out there. I would love to hear more around what grants are we finding out there that we can help the county on saving. Beautification and quality of life for families and projects. We're nowhere near able to do this yet. One day, we want to be able to see beautification and quality of life enhancements in Turner County. Right now, all of the funds are being disbanded, we don't have the extra revenue to do a lot of these beautification projects. And we know that when we do beautification and we bring a quality of life enhancements, we are able to increase our tax base. That's how we get a lot of our funding. If there's nothing beautiful about coming to our community or we're not adding things that are gonna attract families, our tax base is never gonna increase. I ask all of you to ask me, what about Turner County attracts families and businesses that can increase our tax base? What is Turner County known for? What attracts more people to our community? We would like to keep, continue to think about that, continue in that vision, the more money that we can conserve to answer these questions and make Turner County one of those places that people say, I want my family there, because there's great, there's a great school system, I know that's not in any of our control, there's great parks, there's great opportunities in this community. Let's think about things like that that we can offer so that we can get more tax base into Turner County. Now, moving right into revenues and income. We, in 2023 and 2024, we exceeded our budget primarily because of a couple of reasons. We had fund supplements, we used jail funds to supplement some offset the cost of the jail, we had T-SPOs contributions, we had COVID money, that was one of the reasons that the last audit looked good. Right now, if you look at this, this middle chart is very telling chart for where we are right now. We are 2 million dollars below our projected revenue for this year, there's no COVID money, there was no jail fund supplement, and we rolled back our bail on parking taxes. We're not in the best of places right now. As you can see, this is actual numbers as of last night early this morning for where we are in revenue for the year. We're one month left to reach what our budget are. We're very much off. This year, what we're projecting, we're still budgeting a lot of money, you know, we're still budgeting a lot of money. If we look at the numbers that we have right now, we're still budgeting a lot of money, we're budgeting more than we budgeted last year still, even though the revenues aren't really showing strong for the current year. This is just some information, just verifying the stuff that I just said, the fact that we did use jail fund money to supplement in 2024, to also show that we did use T-SPOs money, that's actually incorrect number, it was 300,000 dollars in T-SPOs money used to supplement our budget as well. And this is also from Quicksites, this is the information that's valid, accurate, that represents our books right now, that we're 2 million dollars in what we plan for general fund revenues as of today. So, again, we had 11.3 in general fund budget, 12, we were able to identify 1 point, we were 1.1 million dollars short, we were able to identify special income through SPOs supplements. So again, we have to find the money, we don't wanna go over on taxes, we don't wanna fix apartments, we don't wanna write more tickets, we don't wanna say we're gonna earn more than we planned. we don't wanna say we're gonna earn more than we planned, and we wanna use our funds more strategically. Uh, so again, this is what we're proposing when we talk about using our funds more strategically. Four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that goes typically, we, uh, from T-SPO typically, every year we use three hundred. This year, because of the deficit, we're suggesting to use a little bit more. Uh, SPOs, this will be our first time using our SPOs to offset our costs. There's a certain building maintenance items that we do wanna get done. So we're taking SPOs in order to get some of this building maintenance done, nowhere near the one point eight million that we need, but we're taking some, and the jail fund as well. We usually, in twenty twenty-three, we took two fifty, this year we're hoping to use a little bit more to offset costs again as we all see revenues are down. Uh, the key income projections, um, for, um, what we're projecting for next year changes include property taxes. You know, this year we anticipated for, um, four million, you know, we are currently at three. So we're one million dollars short in property taxes. So next year we are advising that we go with three point five. The Tax Assessor has recommended three point seven, the Tax Commissioner has re- recommended two point five. So we're going right in the middle as a recommendation for what the property taxes should be. Um, we, uh, made a few more adjustments across the board. Um, we've asked for additional fees and renovations, which are just like small little numbers from recreation. Um, if we look at traffic fines in state, in the state court, we're currently at three point one five, we budgeted for four point four. Next year for the current budget year, we're, we're projecting four point three. Uh, so all these numbers are realistic and conservative numbers, and again, we're still budgeting more than we budgeted last year. Okay, going into our expenditures. So, um, I wanna skip over this slide and just go to right now, another slide on expenditures for right now. This is where we stand right now as departments, these are all the departments that have already overspent their current budget. I will say this does not account for the amendments, there have been certain amendments made. So a lot of these overspending can be attributed to some amendments that we have made. But I do just wanna highlight the, uh, the detail of the data and information that we are able to look in and that we need to continue with the, with the state of the budget right now, we have to closely monitor every dollar at this point. Uh, so overall, everyone took a cut over what was requested. You know, um, there was a five point five three percent overall reduction in what everybody asked for. And pretty much it was almost seven hundred thousand dollars in less than what everybody asked for. We had to, we had to, we couldn't get it, we couldn't, we couldn't pay for it. Um, so as we go in, you know, we started with that, you know, one point eight million dollars shortfall, and then we were able to balance it out at twelve point two five nine, leveraging our fund money in order to give everything back down to them. Uh, so again, the far left, right, left number is what everyone asked for. The middle, the middle number is what was last year, and the far right number is what we are proposing to work with for the next year. Uh, the things that we took into consideration with budgets, we took, we took contingencies out, we took out miscellaneous items, um, line items that haven't been spent historically. If you have something in your budget that for years and you never used it, we took it. Um, average over five year history, so for certain things, the number that we requested this year was higher than in the last five years, we got an average number. Um, we also building maintenance items, each department had building maintenance items. We moved all of those items into the building maintenance budget instead of in your own budget. So your building maintenance will come out of the building maintenance budget. Um, and again, we discussed using funds more aggressively, and one thing that's not listed here is gas and diesel for departments that have gas and diesel, because the price of gas and diesel has been down. We tr- we scaled back on the price of gas and diesel, um, across budget, county budgets. Um, where are the here's next dollars go? Um, this is where, how the percentage of how the money is broken down. Forty-seven percent of every dollar that we have goes to public safety, followed by public works and especially in special appropriations courts, admin, if you wanna see the full breakdown, this is, uh, my stars are covering some of the words, sorry, but these are all of the budgets in order from the biggest budget to the smallest budget in the county. So first off, starting with the sheriff's budget, the sheriff, you, uh, requested two point one, uh, million for your sheriff's budget, and we are proposing to give you exact, well, you requested two point one and we are proposing to give you exactly what you had last year. Um, right now, uh, that is, that's not a decrease over what you had last year. And that's forty-three thousand dollars less than what you requested for this year. Um, you'll see in all this slide, every department we're gonna go with, the budget bearings is below. Those numbers show where, if this department has overspent, or if this department has given, has saved money for the county and not overspent their budget. Uh, so this is again, is just a diagram of the sheriff requested this, that's what he had last year, and this is what we're proposing, no difference. Okay, moving on to the jail, the jail, we're, we're, um, we're giving the jail fifteen thousand dollars less than what they requested. Um, and it's a fifty, one thousand dollars more than what it received last year, and that's due to the funds being leveraged to offset those costs. Again, the jail, we're staying balanced. Moving on to EMS, um, they requested four, one point four. Uh, they make up eleven point eight two percent of our overall budget, they requested, we are giving them fifty thousand dollars more than they had last year, but still giving them twenty-seven thousand dollars less than what was requested. Uh, again, requested, approved, and budgeted for each department. Roads, you'll see roads, we're seeing green across the board here, the road department has never overspent their budget, at least from what I'm seeing historically. Uh, they requested one point three million for the road department, and we are giving them sixty-four thousand less than that, but still twenty-four thousand more than what they requested. Here we are again. Special appropriations, this one is a series of budgets that include, I believe it includes the library and a sort of variety of different special appropriations. Uh, we are giving this account less than was proposed last, proposed last year. Uh, so only a three percent change. Okay, fire, um, fire, uh, we are, fire requested a lot for his crews, which we encouraged him to get a full idea of what was needed for the fire department. The fire department has a lot of equipment that is out of date and is a safety risk and a hazard for our fire department right now, so although we weren't able to give you everything that you asked for, Bruce, we are, uh, wanting to get all of that equipment compliant, and we believe that this, it should be enough, uh, to balance that. There's also one other important consideration here where he's, it shows he has one hundred eighty-one thousand dollars more than requested, I mean, more than last year, but that is including a ninety, uh, the pumper cost that is usually not budgeted. So we're budgeting something that we're still gonna have to pay, that he gets charged for anyway, every year. Uh, so that looks like a higher increase, but it's really not. Uh, the clerk or Superior Court, uh, so that is Ms. Green, um, um, not a clerk, oh, yes. Um, and requested five eighty per person, that's a four, four point four percent of the overall county budget. Uh, we are giving Mary Lee a seventy percent increase in orders because of the vacant positions that are still available. Uh, the last year's budget did not include those vacant positions, so this is enough to cover those vacant positions as well as the insurance and all the things that come with a overtuition. Uh, here, the shop, uh, we are fifty-seven thousand more for, uh, shop as well than they had last year. Um, and the shop has also done a good job of not going over budget. Uh, the executive department, um, we are, uh, at, at, there's a fifty-seven thousand dollar increase in executive, that is pretty much the budget of the county commissioners. Uh, this is a partial budget for a county manager. We wanted to fully budget for a county manager, but we couldn't afford to budget a full county manager only to plan to hire a county manager, county manager in the first of the year. Uh, so we only have a half of a salary of a county manager in this current budget. We had to also cut shop, everybody had to. Uh, as bad as we need. Uh, tax commissioner, uh, the tax commissioner took one of the biggest cuts out of the, uh, group, uh, sixty-five thousand dollar cut over last year. This is largely because of a computer request, uh, that had been requested for several years and never used. Um, so we went and get and took that, and you know, again, if it's needed, the board can reconsider. If that computer equipment is really needed, it can be reconsidered. Um, what else can I find? Admin, uh, that's the trees in her, in the, in the tax office. Uh, there's a thirty-six thousand dollar increase over last year, but still three point five, three thousand five hundred less than current year. Another tree that has some conversations about its overspending and needs to go up, particularly this year. Uh, and again, these, for this current year, there's overspending, it's most likely due to budget amendments that have been made that aren't funded in our actual dollars, and that's the case for this one. Uh, E-nine-one-one, we kept that completely flat across the board. Uh, and then recreation, um, they're getting another one of the second largest cuts in the, um, in the budget, forty-one thousand dollar cuts. Some of that cut was allocated because it was building maintenance, and we've allocated that, thirty of that into the building maintenance department. So it looks like forty-one, forty thousand, but it's actually probably equal to eleven thousand. And again, we see the recreation department has done a good job of not going over budget consistently. Uh, moving on to Superior Court, uh, we went down five thousand dollars on Superior Court. Um, and this one is requested change was, they requested five thousand dollar change, and we just pretty much brought it back down to where it was before, previous year. Uh, Tax Assessor, one of our gold star winners of all the budgets, because they requested, um, uh, hundred, uh, a hundred and three thousand dollars less than last year. Why? Because the revaluation of all the property is done now. So they had a big project of work to do for the reval that is no longer needed, so some savings for the county. Love to see it. Uh, we, uh, actually still, uh, so yeah, we, uh, we're, we're proposing, uh, to give them two hundred and nineteen. So a lot less than what they had last year. Public Court, uh, this is giving, uh, we're giving eight thousand dollars, proposing to allocate eight thousand dollars more than last year. Uh, still two thousand dollars less than what you requested. Uh, and you also show signs of never overspending your budget, which I think is a good trait, so thank you for that as well. Uh, Elections Department, um, we're giving, we're proposing, and I wanna clarify, I'm speaking for the entire board, this is purely a proposal. Uh, the, um, proposed change for last year is two thousand dollars, uh, and requesting, uh, we requested one six five and we're proposing one six oh. Building Maintenance, um, they took a considerable cut as well. Uh, I know we cut a whole position in this department. Um, we had to, um, which was helpful to us to be able to cut a position, thank God, that is the only position that we had to cut this year. Um, and we are thirty-two thousand dollars less than they were given last year for that one position cut. So some savings definitely for the county. Uh, State Court, again, seven thousand dollars more than last year, a good spending habits in State Court, no overspending. Extension Services, this, this, the people here in this building, um, two thousand dollars more. Uh, The District Attorney, uh, we are making adjustment of five point, five, five thousand dollars in the District Attorney, uh, District Attorney's budget. Uh, seventy-six thousand dollars less than what was requested, uh, but we are giving a considerable, um, what we can, what we can. Find it where we can. Uh, moving on to magistrate court, three thousand more than the previous year. Uh, twelve hundred dollars less than what we requested. Uh, In the corner, um, eight thousand, eight point eight thousand more. I'm also from there. Oh, there we go. Been more than last year, but, um, fifteen hundred dollars less, excuse me, less than what was requested. Sony, um, five, we took five thousand dollars from you, Regina. Um, mostly those are those contingencies and miscellaneous things that began from the past budget. Uh, and you are also saving us what the cost of the department cost prior to you anyway, so still a safety for the county, thank you. Uh, Emergent EMA, still more than what was last year, but not as much as requested. And I think we all are just kinda getting the moral of the story here. We're trying to give as much as we can, but we can't give everything, uh, or else we won't have. Uh, landfill, this is a, I'm gonna skip over now, it's a big budget and same purpose session. Um, oh, and border equalization, um, this one we are giving three point, three thousand less, three point nine thousand less than last year. This was largely because we saw that there was not a utilization of those funds in the current cycle or the previous cycle, so we think this should be enough, again, if needs, everyone's going to come to the board and place another cost. Um, and I just wanna end it up with, you know, what can we all do for the counties to save the county money? Those are the conversations that I really would love to hear from everyone's side. This is what we can do to bring in more revenue, this is what we can do to save the county money as we are in this position. And once we get to a point where we're seeing that the, the money is leveling back out, then I think requests can be more fulfilled at a higher level. But think about what is Turner County known for, how can we grow this community? How can we bring in more taxpayer, tax base here? Those are the things that we want to consider to think about. So with that, that concludes my presentation, hopefully it wasn't too long, hopefully it wasn't too complicated. Hope you everyone understand that, and now I will open up the floor for questions, comments, concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate all of your and Dana's work on this day. I couldn't flip pages fast enough to keep up with you on Sunday. I mean, I know you was trying to go through it. The, uh, I think y'all did a lot of work, but I, I couldn't even write down my questions on each department. You know, the, I, I got three out of twenty.
Okay.
The, uh, but I, it's gonna take me a minute before I can vote on the, I don't know if you're.
Yeah, we don't have to, we're not voting on anything.
That's awesome.
Yes, the vote, we don't vote on the budget till the end of the month. Uh, we have a public hearing, uh, as I shared, that's coming up soon.
We're having a public hearing before we even.
Well, we gotta, we gotta have consensus before we go to the public hearing.
Yeah.
So a lot of call meeting, I would think, or report sixteen.
I, I, I don't even know where to begin right this minute.
Okay, well, every commissioner has had the proposed budget in their hand.
I just got this five minutes.
But you've had the proposed budget for three weeks.
You, you was been changing it, you was changing.
I only changed, I only changed one, I only changed one little thing, and I, and I explained what those little things were. It was only a small change, so what you're seeing is a ninety-nine percent reflection of the same thing that you had before. It's very minimal changes.
I will say that we've tried very hard to, we looked at all, we, we literally went line by line with the trees. Any questions we had, we asked the department heads or constitutional officers about them, depending on what it was. Um, we, uh, we did like, in the jail, they had historically put building maintenance. We actually moved building maintenance into building maintenance, so that's no longer gonna be charged to the jail. We moved eleven, I think it was eleven hundred in elections, that was building maintenance, so that's not in jail. So we try to be consistent, um, to move out those things like miscellaneous, no one got miscellaneous. When you're looking for cuts, that's an easy one to cut. Um, contingency, we also cut contingency because, um, it's not a specific need at the moment. That doesn't mean that department heads and constitutional officers at some point can't come back and say, here's something that popped up that I didn't project, and then the board can discuss it. But we, trying to find two million dollars when, when we have no one coming to the board saying, here's how we can help you. It's, it's tough, you have to make some hard decisions, and it, we did, we literally went line by line, we went to five years. We tried to be fair, uh.
And precisely the only changes that were made off of the budget that everyone had for three weeks was that eighty-six thousand dollar adjustment, is that was, uh, the detail of what the adjustment was. It's only an eighty-six thousand dollar change, uh, which I can actually read that out loud.
Quick, let me, can I get my three questions real quick?
Yep.
They just, they just got me real quick. You, you, we took the expense. You, you, we took the expenses out of the, if the coroner office wants to remodel a room or something other, it's not in his budget. It is in the.
It'll be made.
That's how we done it, like ten years ago or something. But I think our auditors wanted it in, he's, I may be wrong, but I.
Well, there was only two or three offices that still have building maintenance and everyone else had been moved to building maintenance.
But it's, if it's moved to building maintenance, one department could get everything done and it not really reflect.
There's line items for each department.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He said two hundred and fifty come out of twenty-three, twenty-four year from the jail fund? I don't, I think that was twenty-two, twenty-three. I don't think we took anything out of jail fund in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, I had to audit to verify it.
Yeah, I know it was very difficult. We skipped, we did that and then we skipped the mission we did.
It's in the audit, yeah, just.
Fair, I'm just, I don't recall it. The, uh, and did you, let me get this last one. The clerk, the clerk of court, I, I, I was hearing you say, I looked at the budget, I know it went up a lot. But you said that we're gonna fund positions that are not even, that she hadn't filled yet, is that what I?
She had two vacancies that she had not had an opportunity to fill, but she intends to fill this fiscal year. So we funded them, they've been on the books, but she just, she just hasn't been used yet. So, so they were there, um, she just hasn't been.
How long they been gone?
Um, one left in May of last year and one, uh, in August, they both were terminated.
So it, it hadn't been long. I, I, that, when you, what you said, you talk real fast, that scares me sometimes.
Sorry, you can always ask me to slow down, Brad.
I'm slower. I, I couldn't even write down everything else I had, but I, I will get to that.
During your presentation, multiple times, you said, we, we, we did this and we did that. Now, I don't know who we, I guess we is you and Dana, but there are three more commissioners. The only time I've had a phone call about, I haven't had a phone call about anything, but if you called me last few years to ask me if I wanted to put a thing on this agenda. And I didn't, and I started asking you about the budget. So the phone call wasn't about the budget. And the only phone call I've had from this committee was about suing the city of Ashburn, nothing about the budget. So it wasn't we, it was you two.
Well, I clarified that this was my proposal.
To be clear, the three of the commissioners were left out.
I, well, first off, there's a lot of inaccuracy in everything that you just said. And if you're gonna speak about something that I did, I would like you to say a fact.
I'm telling you the facts, I'm telling you the facts.
I spoke with you.
And asked me last week afternoon, if I wanted to put something on this agenda. And I started hitting everything and I started asking you about the budget. Matter of fact, a bunch of jail funds.
We spoke, we spoke twice about the budget. We spoke twice about it.
Yes, you did.
And you've had the budget for three weeks. You've had the budget for three weeks. That doesn't, if you've had the budget for three weeks, you have a question, you have something that you want to say when I call you. You say, you've had the budget, if you have comments on it, what are they? You've had it for three weeks, what are your comments? What do you want to say? What is your proposal? I put in a lot of work, what is the work that you put in with the budget that you had in three weeks? What is the work that you put in?
I'm gonna tell you that those three commissioners should have been involved for the trial.
They've had the budget for three weeks.
I'm not condemning how you did it or what, or, or, or the, or the, it is, I'm just saying we should have been involved.
You had it for three weeks.
I don't think that's too much to ask. If I want to represent, if I want to represent the, my commissioners and my district, I need to be involved. And that's all I'm gonna say. You can say all you want to, I'm done.
I know I can, I'm the chair. And I, like I said, you had it for three weeks. And if you have anything to say about the budget, you can call, you can share, we can talk about it. And I called you and we spoke about it multiple, multiple times.
Dana showed me the budget last year and did right.
But Latrice sent out the budget three weeks ago.
I, I know Dana, y'all have been working on the budget, I've had multiple conversations with Dana. She said, we're still doing this, we're still doing that, did I miss that?
No, we've talked about it and, and I've given you an overview of the things that we're doing.
But she showed me last year.
But you can hide it for three weeks.
I, I, I don't remember, these numbers have been passed over there.
They, they really have. But what we've been doing is fine tuning the breed to make sure that it's clear. We made a couple of adjustments, the eighty-six thousand to address a concern.
Has any commissioner proactively reached out and said that you have any thoughts on what Latrice shared? You know, I called you and had conversations. I said, Brad, Latrice sent the budget, what are your thoughts? What are your feedback? You said, I haven't had a chance to look at it and you're still saying that three weeks later.
Sit down and go over it, Bill.
You're still saying it three weeks later, you haven't looked at it.
I just.
I think you use too much money to balance the budget. Like I've been talking for the last fifteen, twenty years, we gotta cut service. We can't keep, every year we go through the same rule, man. Don't nobody wanna cut service, don't nobody wanna raise taxes. So we gonna have to go through it soon or later, you can't keep on giving a bit of money to the county. Going in this, putting this, putting that, and I agree, keep on going.
And we, and we.
Got this little guy sitting, ain't got too much going on in it. Everybody leaving here, y'all can't see it. Better wake up. Place stuff closing, we gonna have to do so. Something gotta be there, we can't keep on going.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir. Hey, uh, my name's Patrick Warren, the District Attorney, some of y'all know me, some of y'all don't. Um, I just really just want to say three things. One, I'm a reporter on State Court. Uh, things are going really well, we have State Court today. Uh, people have money, pay their tickets, it's always a good thing. Uh, clerk's office always doing a great job, sheriff's office always bringing us good cases. Um, two, I want to commend Chairman Burgess, he's responsive to my questions. Um, I came into this budget process a little different than most counties. You know, I'm in four counties. So this is done a little differently than I've ever seen it, but doesn't make it wrong. Uh, I appreciate the, putting it up there and I appreciate what he said about us. All of us, none, no department offered less money than they did last year, is that what you said? Um, anyway, I just want to say, that's interesting. I certainly didn't intend to save Turner County any money when I proposed my budget because we need more services, everybody needs more money. But I'll say this, this man right here, slow down, he went over the numbers with me, we met at least twice. Um, and I want to say, I want to tell you this because he encouraged me to do the same. Slow down, look at the numbers and look at what you need. And that's what I did, spent the weekend doing that and he can tell you. I texted him and I said, you know what, I've revised my budget request and I requested, well, let me just say this. He, uh, I requested six thousand dollars and he approved five thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven. I'd say it's pretty darn close to what we needed as opposed to what we wanted. So based on that, I got faith in what they're doing. And the last thing, number three, is I want to ensure the commission and I want to ensure the people of Turner County. The District Attorney's Office stepped up and took over State Court, will do the work, will make sure the tickets get processed and will make sure the money gets turned over to the county. So we're gonna be there, I took my oath, whether you give me one dollar or no dollars or a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So I want to appreciate the work y'all put into this, we'll be there to do the work, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good with your budgets, I'm not arguing about it. It's just, I, I'm, I want to look at stuff a little bit slower.
Yes, yes, of course. Yes.
And my main issue is two three sixty from the jail fund. And, and I know you're, uh, what'd you say, the accountant or the? Audit.
Yes.
Say two, two fifty.
Latrice, that's correct, right?
Latrice, what year was, did we take the two fifty?
The one in the audit.
It was twenty-three, twenty-four.
And, and I will say that Latrice, Latrice sat down with us and went through every budget. She made us aware, so like, here's a hundred thousand dollars in here that we have not been voted before. So we've been paying.
I, I doubt this town.
So we pay the pump, we put the pump truck in there because we've historically been not being transparent with that payment. So we tried to put in everything that we know is going to be a schedule occurrence. And one thing that he didn't mention in here is that there's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we proposed for, uh, a two percent pay raise for employees. Um, so we were working to take care of the needs of the county and still trying to look out for the employees and do things for the employees. So we were trying to balance multiple needs. Everybody knows that I am a fan of rec, everybody knows that. And I feel, see the value in rec. But you'll notice, they took the biggest hit because I sat back and said, okay, we have to do what's right.
You moved it to, to building maintenance?
Only.
For the James.
The thirty thousand, but it's still taking a bigger hit than, than anybody else, even if you subtract that out.
Yes, sir, Chair.
I want to beg your pardon about that. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars is a big hit to me. Latrice, how much about, how much of the jail fund budget is used up by the requests that we send up on our, when we get bills and we send it up to you for jail fund? How much of that do you, percentage of the jail fund?
Well, you know, I, I think.
The bills that we send up that we run the jail. So when you take three sixty for my ability to run the jail, that's a bigger hit than anybody's taking. You might say, you know, whatever you want to say about it. Um, I know I got the biggest pie, I got the most employees, I got the biggest fleet of vehicles in the county. And I also do the work that you asked me to do that helps you balance your budget. And then you want to take another three sixty from it. If you take three sixty out of my jail fund, I put it on the jail budget because I have to have it to operate. I moved, last year I moved, uh, nurses, uh, the medical, we have to have for the jail, add the jail budget and moved it over on the jail fund, a hundred fifty one thousand. And you want to take that away from it. I gotta put it back on the jail fund if you take it. Because I gotta, I gotta run the jail on the jail fund, including the jail budget. And you can, you can pick it and say, well, line item this, we never done line items for the jail fund until about two years ago. There was no, Latrice, was there any line items at all for the jail fund? Up till two, three years ago, whenever we started doing line items because somebody asked.
Well, it's turning a lump sum amount.
A lump sum amount, because when I would call and say, how much is in the jail fund? Cause we need to get something repaired out of, new, new, uh, repair to this or hot water heaters or whatever we needed. I would call and say, how much is in the jail fund? And what, what line items in, um, maintenance in the jail fund is what is in the jail fund because it fixes a lot of stuff. There's a lot of equipment down there that we don't write line items. So I don't put ink cartridges for the Canon printers in there. I don't put six thousand pages of pa, pieces of paper that we have to have because every time we do a report, we have to do also file. We do electronically and we put it also in a file down there. So when we talk about taking a hit, three hundred and sixty thousand for my ability to run the jail is a big hit.
So I, I would, I, in looking at the history of the jail fund, uh, there's never been an expenditure. So you said last year that you paid for the nurse, but the nurse has never been charged to the jail fund. What, what has been charged?
Came out of jail fund, it come out of jail budget. And there, the doctors was in the jail budget and we took it out of the jail budget, put it in the jail fund last year. It's not in there, if you look and see on the jail, if you look at the jail budget, it's zeroed out because we moved it over last year to jail fund.
It's actually charged to the jail last year.
She may have moved the money out of the jail fund. It's charged to the jail fund, it's in the jail budget of the jail fund. It's not in the jail, it's not in the jail proposed budget.
For everyone's clarity, uh, the jail, the jail is, has a budget, uh, of one point. Um, jail budget is one point five, requested one point five. And we gave the jail one point four, which is fifty-one thousand dollars more than it had last year. What Andy is referring to, or Sheriff Testor is referring to, is the jail fund. He is requesting the additional bank of money that we don't use that money to offset the original jail budget because he needs all of it.
I'm not questioning, we've been doing it for how many years, Latrice, that we've been running the jail on jail budget and jail fund?
Jail fund.
I mean, ever since I've been here, we have ran the jail on a jail budget and jail funds. The jail funds have went up by the amount of tickets that y'all get funds for. What Mary Lee's office sends y'all reports of how much you collect the fines and how much is sent to, to the commissioners or to the general fund. It's also the same ten percent that's sent to the jail fund off of those citations. It has gone up over the years, but there's also been things added. You took two fifty out last year and that was in there. And I think, uh, Ms. Witten said that the history shows that I only spend three hundred thousand. Well, if I added a hundred and fifty-one to it last year for the nurses, how much is that? Four fifty-one, you take three sixty from it.
No, you spent, you spent four fifty in the jail fund last year. And most of it was in equipment maintenance and utilities. And in equipment maintenance, it was a little bit of everything from lights and cameras and tasers and cameras. So it was a lot of different stuff.
Phone system that runs the county's phone system is down there, all that equipment down there. Um, Robin Flanders that comes down there, if there's something to be repaired on that phone system, the jail fund pays for it. Whether it affects whoever's office in this county that runs those IP phones. The hubs down there, it's maintained through the jail fund because it's in the building down there, I can run it down there. So it helps every agency in here that don't have to pay for repairs on that IP phone system because we pay it out of the jail fund. The utilities for nine-one-one comes out of that down there because it's all on site now, we pay it out of that jail fund. We've been doing it for years. And I realize y'all are in a situation, but I have done everything I've been asked to do. We have wrote more tickets. These guys right here get out there and put their lives on the line, get killed every day, not because of y'all needing ticket money, but because they love doing their job. They stop bad guys and put bad guys in the jail down there. We just turned Worth County away and said, no more inmates because we're full. We're running a hundred and fifteen people in that building down there. And I know that some ideas were, well, we can close the jail. I got eighty inmates that belong to this county. They're either generated by Ashburn or Sycamore, taking warrants on people for crimes committed against people in this county. They're filling our jail up with crimes that were committed here. I've had to turn Worth County and Wilcox County back and say, I can't take them, we're full, they're laying in here on the floor on mats. We've done everything y'all asked us to do. I've given and I'm, I'm done. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna keep saying, okay, and just take it. If you take the three sixty out of the jail fund, I'm putting it on the jail budget because I have to have it to run. Mister Attorney over there, Jake, if you don't mind answering a question for me. Am I mandated to do my job through state law or do I, can I choose to do it?
You are mandated as a constitutional officer.
I shall, every law that says sheriff, it says shall, it don't say can, or if he wants to, it says shall do it. Any of these offices, magistrate court or anything that's in here, sends me a paper, I shall serve that paper, I shall put them in the jail. I shall do this, I shall do that, I have a choice. If I could save this county a dollar, you can bet you I would save it a dollar. I can't do anymore. Can't do it.
I have a question, Chair. Could you, maybe you need to explain to the board the jail fund, why the action comes from.
Ten percent off of traffic fines, every ticket we write, ten percent.
It don't come from proper taxes.
It's not coming off of taxpayers. It, it enables me to spend it on the jail to keep, I'm asking y'all for it. I don't have to ask you for three hundred and eighty thousand or four hundred and fifty thousand, I don't have to come and say, Commissioner, I need that because that's what it takes to run. And I can take it out of the jail fund, we've done for years. And I just can't do it anymore, I can't. You, you say that you give me exactly what I had last year? Okay, thank you, that you gave a three percent raise last year and that's what I added in to my budget. I didn't ask you for any more than you gave three percent, thank you for that. But if you give me what you exactly gave me last year's budget, you're taking the three percent raises you gave away from it. Even though you're giving it to me, you're forcing me to take the three percent somewhere else out of my budget. And all these line items that you highlight and say you took from jail fund, you don't get the pit worth.
The three percent is accounted for in a different line.
You give me a total amount and I decide where to cut it from. And if you cut me below what I need to operate, Mister Burgess is right, Mister Joe, I'm gonna have to cut some services. And it's gonna be fat, it ain't gonna be meat. Meat that I provide for citizens of this county is the stuff I'm mandated to do, not the stuff I choose to do. Thank you for your time, I know y'all have a hard job, I respect every one of these positions. But you know what, I'm elected to by eighty-three percent of the votes in this county to put me back into this office to the under sheriff's office and to give them services. The services that they're accustomed to, I didn't just start doing it since I've become sheriff. I was a chief deputy here too, I would have every budget under the prior sheriff that I was a chief deputy for. So I know what it takes to run the sheriff's office and give the services to the citizens of this county and it's expensive. I got the biggest pie, biggest pie, biggest piece of the pie, but it showed up there that I was the biggest portion, forty-seven percent of the county's budget. But I also put back a whole lot more than you collect in tax money from the taxpayers of this county. I'm not asking you for that money back, I'm glad that I can help. I'm glad these guys can get out there and work doing what they love to do and benefit this county. But we can't do it, I can't squeeze them anymore and you can't have a term. I, I mean, that's all I got to say, I, it's, it takes it to run it, I feel for you. But I, I'm prepared to cut it, but I know what a cut will do to my agency, I know what it'll do.
What are you, what are you suggesting?
I would have to cut personnel, I can't cut services.
Out of which, out of what, the jail?
No, I have the minimum amount of jailers it takes to run the jail now. And, and we talked about how much to charge other counties. I, I know y'all have done the math, but think about this math right here. I got the minimum amount of jailers it takes for our inmates, not anybody else's inmates. I have to pay the electric bill, whether I have twenty inmates or a hundred inmates, I have to pay the electric bill. The only thing that's going to go up down there, more inmates I have, is the water coming in the building, the water going out of the building, the food that's safe, and some medical costs. I'm going to be there either way, if there's twenty or a hundred in there. So when you do the math and you say, I'm, I'm not charging enough, well, if you take into consideration those twenty inmates I might get from another agency and put them in my jail, if I'm already got to be there for them. Now, if I had to hire an extra person, I say, yeah, okay, I can get rid of them and get rid of that person. I'm already at the minimum, I cannot get rid of a person if we go down to twenty inmates, I can't get rid of the minimum I've got to have. I'm running on bare minimum now. The only thing that I have that's fat to me, is fat to you. It gives me the ability to serve people, pull them off that interstate and give extra services when somebody's on the call. Thomas County? Chief, how long does it take a deputy from Thomasville to respond to a call down there in Thomasville?
Well, Callahan County, it can be thirty or forty minutes, before it goes on.
I would get elected out of here if it took me thirty minutes to get to a call in this county, they do that down there. What county wants to answer calls on the telephone? Bibb County wants, and hired our deputies that come sit in their offices up there, never go to a call. They want them to answer the phone and answer the calls on the telephone. I would be run out of here. I, and but there, it's happening all around, so I don't have job vacancies here, I've got full staff, jail just got full today. Employees coming from Doherty County. I do the best I can, I try to create an environment that's safe for these guys and girls so they can go out and do what the work for citizens of this county they elected me to do. I'm asking y'all, um, I don't know what you got to do, I don't know, but I give all I can give. I give back more than I take, I can promise you, and give you service. So, and I, and these other agencies are the same way, I'm not just talking for me, I'm saying for every one of them. And I'm, I'm a taxpayer here too. But if you, for years, for eighteen years taxes hadn't been raised, maybe it should have been a little along the way, and it wouldn't be a such an impact on people because you have to pay for services. I'm a taxpayer and I realize that, I don't like paying taxes more than anybody else does, but I've done all I can do to help them. And I'm going to fight to continue to do the service I do now because I know what it benefits the taxpayer. If I had to cut, for me, services, it means cutting that ability to give back what we're given to y'all, to, that y'all can spread out amongst everybody in here and the taxpayer. But I can't give it, I mean, I can't, I'm going to have to fight about it, because I can't, I, I'm mandated to do it, I can't not do it.
Well, Sheriff, well Sheriff, I would love, you know, to talk to you more about it, but as of yesterday, you told me you weren't allowed to talk to me based off of your attorney.
If it leads to litigation where I have to ask for that three sixty on my jail budget and y'all cut it out, then I'm going to have to litigate it. That's my only options, or, or cut services, and I know what cutting services will do for the taxpayers of this county. So I'm going to fight to keep what I'm doing, the way I'm doing it. And it could lead to litigation, so yeah, I can't discuss, I'm telling you what I turned in is what I need to operate the sheriff's office. And if you decide to cut that, I have to make a choice, I have to either cut services or fight you in court. If I cut services, I know what it's going to do to this county, it's going to put you where you got to find two million next year instead of a million this year, or five million next year, and I don't want to do that to the taxpayers. So I'm going to fight for the right to keep providing the service I give to y'all and the taxpayers. And it could lead to court, so I'm, you're right.
Are you suggesting you're going to cut services in the sheriff's department because of the jail budget?
I, the jail is a sheriff's office, it's not a separate budget, we separated, but it's all one, it all falls under the constitutional office of the sheriff, the jail does. So if I cut, I decide where to cut out, out of that, those two entities. Nine one one belongs to y'all, I agree to run it. If y'all do whatever you do, that's going to also cut everybody in here ability to do their job if them dispatchers can't dispatch. But those, y'all's the choice.
At two point two million dollar jail, it's just, when we're charging forty dollars and it's costing us seventy dollars a day, um...
But it don't cost seventy to keep them twenty over there, because all they're bringing to the table when they come is more food and more water and more sewer.
But we have to look at total cost of operations.
I've got that cost whether they're here or not, that's my point, you can't say it.
So maybe we don't need a jail, maybe we need to transport them.
Okay, and, all right, so Worth County's paying a hundred thousand dollars a month, I just called the sheriff over there, he's paying a hundred thousand dollars a month now, all right? He still has a jail and he's paying a hundred thousand dollars a month now. So if we want to do that, I still have to have a jail because we still hook people in. We still have to let them come in and they were laying bond out in the aisle or two aisles, I'm not going to take them to Houston County because it's Worth, Tim. Everybody around us can't house them, I don't call them. I'd have to haul them, ones he's here, ones he's there, have people transporting, and I couldn't let jailers transport because they can't transport prisoners. It'd have to, I'd have to hire a whole new set of people that's certified and pay them more money. And so I don't know that it would be a saving, I don't, I can do the math, and I can probably tell you that it'd be a wash. And we would be at the mercy of traveling up and down these highways with liability of transporting inmates from here and there, and show you cases where inmates have jumped out of back of cars and done whatever they do, and then the county's liable for that. So if you want me to look at shutting the jail down and get you a cost estimate on that, I'd be glad to. But I'm just telling you, it's not feasible, um, no county does it. The ones that are doing it are going back and trying to build a jail. Worth County's building a jail. Sixteen million dollar jail, thirteen million dollar jail over there, because crime's not going away, it's not stopping, it's not going backwards. I'm sorry that it's not, we do a good job here keeping it curtailed. Um, if you look at the crime rate here as far as break-ins and stuff goes, I give credit to these folks right here. We got the lower, lower crime rate as far as burglaries goes, armed robberies, everything here. Whether you contribute to Ashburn or the sheriff's office, I want to thank Longport, it has a lot to do with it. So I, I don't know, I, I wish they had the answer, but I've tried to wave a wand and give as much I can give. Y'all spend it, not me. I spend what it takes to run the sheriff's office, but that's what I'm elected to do. Y'all are elected to manage it for a county, I agree. But if I save you six million and you spend it on something else other than me, that's not me.
But you don't save us six million dollars?
I don't, I don't, I cost you about four and give you six, so, and it, and when I come up, the six number is that when you count the jail fund.
Sheriff, I, I don't want you to take credit for all of the work that the court, the jails. Everyone in this county works to make office.
Absolutely, I agree, one hundred percent.
You, Mary Lee, Mary Lee worked on it, the judges have to deal with it, there's so many people involved in all the revenue.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
But they ain't got a ticket.
I'm not taking a hundred percent credit for it, but these guys right here are the ones that write that ticket and put their lives on line to get to the rest of everybody else, I'm not taking away from them, I hope none of them think that I am. No agency in here I hope thinks I'm taking away from anything y'all do, I respect every one of you. I'm fighting for Andy's office, and your office, the sheriff's office, I'm fighting for them and these girls and guys right here. I'm not cutting anybody else in here, no way, shape, form, or fashion, or y'all. I'm fighting for my right to do my job that people they committed to, and that's all I'm saying.
And I think the key, the key takeaway is that we generate, you know, four or five million dollars in income and between sheriff and courts is six, seven million. It's not really, there's no winning for anybody. If, when you add what the cost to run a sheriff, a jail, and the court system that's all involved in, that is more than, if it weren't for property taxes, nobody would be able to run. So, um, it's not just a one shot reverse, it's a lot involved in there. But thank you, Sheriff, for all of your service, as well as all of the deputies and the people in the jail. I have a major respect for every single person in here, whether you're an elected official or not. Every single person in here I see equally, and I see every people here who have great spending habits. I've seen people here who've been trying their best with what they have. I've seen people here who've come to talk to me and try to find ways to make adjustments, and I really, really appreciate every person in this room.
Do we get a library or nothing?
Yes.
So that's in eleven thousand, in the budget?
Eleven thousand and eight?
Yeah.
Yes, for the library, for the kids' need.
I'll deal with that one.
All right, do we have any more discussion forward, I think that's the conclusion, or anyone, any more comments or on the audience?
What, what, what's an acceptable number, Sheriff? What's an acceptable?
What I turn in and I ask for, because that's what it takes to run the sheriff's office.
And see, that's the difficulty, Andy, is, is, it's all or no, it's all or nothing, you're not willing to work with us to find compromise. I, I appreciate your situation, I do, I really do. I mean, literally, we agonize every single one of these budgets, we didn't want to cut anybody who could have avoided it. But this conversation is the same conversation we've had with everyone, I can't cut it, I've got to have everything, I've got to have everything. So, we had to make choices to try to get a balanced budget, and yeah, it was painful, and three hundred and sixty thousand for you is painful when fifteen hundred is painful in a budget that is si, extremely smaller than yours. Because it, it hurts just as much them as, I know it's hard to imagine, but when you're looking at a very small budget.
I would love to have a, I would love to have a smaller budget, I'd love to have two people that are employed, I would, I would, I would do that. That's not what I run for, I run to run the sheriff's office and, and the employees that I have. I, I get what you're saying, but if you go back and y'all done went back on history and look at stuff, look at history of how much, um, the increases, what the increases were in the sheriff's budget and the jail budget, it's all been salaries. There's been very minute amount of increases in any line item for other stuff, vehicles, um, all this, every, the biggest portion of it is salaries.
Do you have any promotions in this budget for the sheriff's department?
Promotions? If I do, I'll take it from somewhere else and delete it from, I'll take it from another line item.
So the salaries doesn't have any promotions in the salary line item?
Uh, I, I, I'm going to do some promotions, but I will take it from somewhere else, I'll make adjustments inside my budget, budget. Just like I said with the jail thing there where you took stuff out of line items, I'm not going to take the stuff out of those line items, I'll take it from wherever you, if you give me a total number, I'll take it from a line item somewhere that I don't need. I need stuff more than other stuff, I triage my budget just like everybody else does. I do it in-house and do it already before I turn it in.
Well, and that's, and that's when we looked at, like, the jail budget, you had said that you put the nurses in there last year, the nurses budget in the jail fund last year. You know, and we, we, we looked at everything, and we did that for everybody, we were like, what's the history, where did they get the money? What, what would hurt them, what's their mission? We did that for every single budget. Oh, okay, so, so the three of us that evaluated the budget, um, Latrice, myself, and the chair. And we spoke to her folks, we, we appreciated their situation, we tried to understand and where we could make adjustments, we absolutely did that. We didn't want to break anybody's capability of meeting their mission. Um, there have been budgets that historically have been, you know, when we did it the old way, I was called the old way. We would look at the little budgets and nitpick them to death. And then when it got to the bigger budgets, it's like, looks good to me, looks good to me. We didn't do line item evaluations for anybody. Not certain people, but anybody. We should do that, we did that for everybody. And, um, I appreciate you don't agree with, with the recommendation we came up with, and tha, and that is certainly your right, and I understand, and I'm sympathetic, I really am. And you guys do an amazing job, and we think that everyone in, in the county does a good job. But when you got to find two million dollars, there are hard decisions that have to be made. And there's five of us, and I think collectively we can take what we have and find a solution that works for the county.
Hundred fifty thousand.
You going to take a hundred and fifty?
I'm trying, I'm just coming up with ideas.
You can take the three sixty I gave, or when I'm over next year, don't say, you're over, whenever you take it from me.
Well, you were.
So you can take it and put it on a piece of paper to balance your budget, if you want to take one fifty, rather than take one fifty. I'm, I'm, listen, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you, but if I got, if I got six cars hit deer this year, um, so we're going to be over.
Still take two fifty, managing that.
Don't we have the rest of the week, next week, um, God, we're going to, we have no speakers.
Mister Chair. Mister Green, please.
I think it, the, first of all, when did this adjustment go out?
It's going out tonight, we wanted to present it to everyone, and then it's going out, we were making a guess.
Okay, I think it, uh, one for the Board of Equalization. Uh, I believe it said that your, your presentation indicated that it had been cut because it historically had not been utilized. But historically, I haven't had, um, a hundred and eighty-six types of appeals that have to be heard.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
And, um, so, that, it, I, I, I've got to have, um, that, those monies. We're, we've been having the tax appeal hearings, and we still have one, two more segments to do. And that, your postage with my, uh, board members, um, and all that gets, it's been very expensive. And I also have, um, two new members that have not been certified, that it's mandated to have the forty hour training. So, um, it's hard to keep, get board members to serve on that Board of Equalization. And, uh, also with the clerk of superior state and juvenile court, um, I ask for more money because we have more to do. We have a third just yet. If anyone would go to the Tipton Judicial Circuit and look at the court calendars, the circuit calendars, it's color coded. And where we usually have court, last month, it's blue for, for current calendar. Uh, we have court six and seven times a month that includes Superior State and Juvenile Court. With third just yet, I'm having more, uh, I'll be having more trials.
Yeah, the clerk of the court cut was primarily group insurance expense, uh, Latrice adjusted that, um, so that was mainly, um, it was, uh, some workers' comp insurance.
Okay.
So it, that's, that's where your cuts were at, was in, was in that area, so, um...
Okay, and, and also, Mister Chair, um, with, on your slide, it had Superior Court overspend. I don't think people realize Superior Court and upper Superior Court are two different budgets. Okay, I just want to clarify that, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Green. Noted on the Board of Equalization, um, most of it was in salaries. I, I don't know what we're paying them for those two.
But, I, for instance, we have, we're having these tax appeal hearings that's taken all day. My board members make thirty dollars a day, thirty-five dollars a day. You know, uh, surrounding counties, they pay them one twenty-five, one fifty, we're, and, and they're, we're at the bare minimum at thirty dollars a day. Now, the training, um, I say give them forty hours, which is mandated, uh, and I have to send them wherever, I, I can't even have a schedule. But, um, and if they, if these are appealed to Superior Courts because we, we separated them from your single, um, parcel taxpayers to your multiples, and we haven't heard the, the multiples, um, um, hearings, uh, where these landowners own an a, uh, excess of thirteen parcels of property. So there's always a chance it will go up to Superior Court as well. Now, I understand that cuts out of my, um, Board of Equalization part of it once it gets to Superior Court, but then it goes into the purr of Superior Courts. I just want to know that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sit there. More of these amazing people in this room would like to share some thoughts. I think this is super great for all of us to be in this one room together and see how all of these things add up and hear everybody's perspective and point of views, um...
I'm sorry, I've got to make one other statement. I, I think Mister District Attorney is satisfied, um, uh, well, I've heard him say that, you know, you all have been corresponding. I just, I, as far as the State Court is concerned, I want to make sure that the DA's office is taken care of when it comes to the State Court. Because we have to, we went from a hundred and fifty cases a court date from one date a month to a thousand cases on calendar. Because we have to, we went from a hundred and fifty cases, a court date in one day a month, to a thousand cases on calendar because of our backlog. Now, we're at a point now where that backlog is taking, it has been taken care of.
Right.
But if the DA's office is cut, we gonna see this backlog again.
Yeah, they were not cut.
I just wanted to make that observation.
Well, the backlog was really due to COVID because we didn't have court for a long time after COVID. So some of that was COVID-impacted, right? I mean, according to...
Not necessarily. We didn't have state court during COVID.
But we didn't, we didn't process as much.
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Because that's why we had seven million dollars in tickets that were expired and lost the opportunity to recoup those. Now, are we pursuing the, um, failure to appear?
That, that's still on the horizon. Um, something Jay and I, something that Chairman and I have talked about, trying to, uh, figure out a way to monetize those failure to appears. Um, we, it's something that we're gonna explore this year and certainly could be the difference between refilling your reserves and not. So it's a possibility. I, it's something, it, it's out there, it's a possibility. So, um, tr, historically, that's not been what the state court bench has wanted to do, but with enough momentum, I think we could get there. So, I, and I appreciate, uh, Madam Green, her concern for our office. I know there was, that was a transitional year in twenty twenty-four of us taking over the state court, and we could not have done it without the support of the clerk's office. And couldn't have done the job we did today in state court without the clerk's office, so...
It's just amazing.
Yeah, we have a symbiotic relationship, for sure, and, um, I, I just appreciate her concern for us. We've, I do still feel like, um, when Sharon Burgess was willing to sit down with me and go over those numbers, and I could kinda see how we needed to attack this and now my office, what we could offer. I still feel like we're gonna be able to provide excellent service at a hundred percent based on what y'all proposed. So as far as we're concerned, our office, the district attorney, um, we wanna, we wanna join in the mission of Turner County. I, I've sat at that table as an elected official for city council and tried to work budgets with people. But look, if the money's not there, it's just not there. I don't know where folks want you to get money that it's not there, but you're only working with a certain amount of money, and you're trying to make sense out of that and balance the budget. So I, I don't know where, my request I see now was up here when I, when I revised it, I think it's more in line with what, where the income's gonna be. So I just wanna say, it, it's a difficult position y'all, but...
Every day you vote. And, um, still wanna make sure that everyone has had a chance to speak. Anyone else here have to meet? My, um, my, I'm available for continuing conversations, uh, tomorrow, uh, if anyone would like to talk to me.
We got eighty inmates. We need to get Miss Penny or Blake or somebody to process them and get them moving on out. All those folks in jail. And we got three out of there.
Yeah, I wanna say, yeah, there's a couple of guys.
Seventy-seven more to go.
Yeah. Somebody will take some place, I'm sure.
I would be surprised if they're not already.
Anyone else?
I'm sure every department here can say and defend why they think they need more money. I understand that. I mean, every one of us wanna provide a good service to the community and that's my plan where you have to take the budget next to us. I think every one of us could actually, if we sat down and pointed out, I need money for this, I need money for that, I need money for this, I need money for that. Where you get it.
Well, and it's like your equipment, it's safety equipment, so we don't...
Bruce fussing, don't you have?
I'm not fussing, I'll tell you.
I haven't, I, my point is...
Everyone of us can say we need the money.
That's right.
And we can try to justify it here all day long why we need the money because we want to provide a better service. And even though, yes, I did get some of what I asked for, it's still not enough for the stuff I need. But that's everyone here, so I think we, yeah.
Well, we did cut, we did cut building maintenance. Unfortunately, because we haven't addressed building maintenance.
I'm gonna be the one on.
Unfortunately, the building maintenance is this big cloud hanging over there as well. So that's another concern, we're trying to figure out how do we deal with building maintenance? The courthouse needs work, the annex needs work, the fire department and EMS need work. We, we got buildings that are in desperate need of care and love, and we have no idea how we're gonna make those. We haven't even addressed those.
And the man ain't gonna have it, no, no.
Second? Um, motion, I have a motion to adjourn in second. Oh, we actually have a technical session, so, um, motion going in second session, on stage. Thank you, everyone.